So, good evening and welcome everybody to the City of Lake Forest Park City Council Special Meeting for Wednesday, June 4th. And I will call the meeting to order. If that, do I hear motion for adoption agenda? Deputy Mayor Fertani?
All right, so move, um, also may I amend the agenda?
You may.
I'd like to move up the items C and D to the beginning before A.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to amend the agenda, moving item C and D to before item A. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move item C and D to in advance of items A and B. Any discussion? All those, I'm sorry, Mr. Lebo, please.
Um, I think it would be, um, I think I'd prefer that the agenda as is, recognizing the effort that our applicants have come to speak this evening and not to sort of amend the agenda at this moment.
Any other comments? Deputy Mayor, would you like to?
Oh, okay, I'll, I'll, uh, I'll, um, what is the word? Um, graceful? I will try to gracefully withdraw my motion, then if the secondary agrees.
I don't think it's, I don't, it's on the, it's on the table. I don't know if we could, how we withdraw.
Uh, you can, you can, if it's a friendly motion to withdraw, you can withdraw.
Okay, I withdraw the motion.
Close, yeah.
Okay, uh, all right, uh, do I hear a motion for adoption of the agenda as written?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt agenda as written, uh, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any days, guys have it, it passes unanimously, six, six to zero. Thank you very much, council. Okay. Items for discussion, consideration or action. Uh, thank you all for being here tonight. Uh, you, you can imagine it's a bittersweet moment for all of us, um, filling a vacancy, uh, of a, a very beloved colleague and, and leader of our community. At the same time, it's a celebration of democracy and we thank you for your willingness to volunteer for this community. It's not an easy role to take on, uh, and, um, as you probably have heard from some of, some of, uh, the seated and former council members, uh, it is one that is very worthy of, of effort and very rewarding. So with that, we're going to, uh, interview city council candidates. Andrew Weber, Sam Marallo, did I pronounce that correctly? Okay, so and Sebastian, Sebastian Casada, Casada, excuse me. Um, per the council, uh, governance manual, there'll be a candidate introduction, five minutes allowed per candidate. Um, I'm assuming we'll be using a timer which will be visible for you to, to, uh, see, will they be able to see that? You'll, will they go to use the timer then?
Matt?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, so yellow means you're within approaching thirty seconds of the final time and red means you're at, at your time limit. And green mean? Yellow is minute, excuse me, for that timeframe. And then the council will move on to, as you know, the format, but this is for the edification of our friends who are watching online or watch the video later. The city council has predetermined a set of questions and there will be between fourteen and twenty-one minutes per candidate. And then there will be follow-up, uh, questions for candidates, four to eleven minutes per candidate. And then we will get started that way. So, uh, we're gonna get started with, um, is this the order? Start with plane then? Okay, we're gonna start, started with Mr. Weber. Please join us at the podium. And the button on the right, um, on the microphone, that's good, and you know how to use that, that's great. The welcome.
Thank you, mayor, deputy mayor, council members. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. And I do respectfully recognize the circumstances which we are here today. As a fifteen-year Lake Forest Park resident, homeowner and proud parent of a Short Crest High School student, I have a deep personal investment in Lake Forest Park. I care deeply about the health, the growth and sustainability of the community we live in. And I believe this is the right time and way for me to serve. I was drawn to this position because I have both the ability and the desire to contribute meaningfully as a city council member. Educationally, I have a bachelor's in physics, a master's degree in physics and another master's degree in business administration, uh, from the Foster School of Business at University of Washington. My professional background spans close to two decades in leadership roles in science, engineering and business where I have successfully managed multiple cross-functional global teams through large projects and challenging environments. I bring with me strategic planning skills, budget and P and L experience, vision and a commitment to collaborative thoughtful leadership. I have a long track record of community building. I have led and served on the boards of civic and nonprofit organizations over the past twenty years. Where, for example, I led, uh, nonprofit in the founding of a community radio station, WHY R ninety-six point nine FM, uh, to recently as the Commodore of the Puget Sound Cruising Club. I also volunteer as a judge for the Washington State Science and Engineering Fair. That's a fun, uh, volunteer position there as well, supporting the next generation of problem solvers and leaders. I see Lake Forest Park as a unique and special place in the Pacific Northwest. I was drawn here fifteen years ago by a strong sense of community, natural beauty and opportunities to live and work in what I saw as best city in the Pacific Northwest. I still believe that today. I want to help preserve those qualities while responsibly planning for the future, ensuring easy mobility, environmental stewardship, responsible housing solutions, sustainable budgeting, public discourse and fostering a vibrant community life for years to come. I believe that local governments work best when residents bring their skills, knowledge and voices to the table. And I'm looking forward to serving with you in that capacity. I think you'll find, um, collaborative and easy to work with. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak and ask for your support, uh, when filling this position. I look forward to working collaboratively together with you to move Lake Forest Park forward while preserving the qualities that you, myself and, uh, the community of all cherish. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weber. Uh, and so we will, um, move on to, are we doing the introductions all first or are we doing, staying with the questions?
You go one candidate at a time?
Through the whole process, okay. So make sure it's your process, council, I'm just the facilitator, so. Okay, thank you. So, city council predetermined set of questions. Let's start with, who would like to take question number one? Mr. Lebo?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, mayor. I think I'm gonna give you the longest question this evening, Mr. Weber. Lake Forest Park is currently experiencing fiscal challenges with our general fund expenditures exceeding revenues. In the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six biennium, our current biennium, the city council utilized approximately eight hundred thousand from its nearly seven point three million in unallocated fund balance, excluding reserves designated for emergencies. While the city has taken steps to reduce expenses, it has worked to preserve essential public services. Looking ahead, a projected budget shortfall of approximately one point six million or more is anticipated for the twenty-seven, twenty-eight biennium. How would you propose addressing this project, projected imbalance, and please be specific describing your approach?
Okay, um, first, I'd like to acknowledge the council's effort, uh, in, to date in addressing the funding shortfalls. Um, these are difficult decisions to make and the city council has been transparent along the way. I commend the efforts to reduce costs while retaining critical services and the way the council has included the community into that discussion. In general, I do support the revenue and cost measures the council adopted in the current budget, including increases for solid waste utility tax, the increase in surface water utility tax and sewer utility tax in the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budget and would explore additional increases in the twenty-seven, twenty-eight budget where it makes sense. I think it's important to put these taxes in the context of other local cities and what they're charging to address their deficits is I think potentially our tax rates are comparable or perhaps even lower than other local cities. Again, public communication and input is important here. We should look at line items also where costs are increasing at a rate significantly higher than inflation. For example, detention services, we've experienced over a doubling in detention services since the last twenty-three, twenty-four budget. I would propose we negotiate existing services with King County, the city of Lake Forest Park and Sunnyside where we have existing contracts to reduce or control increases of service costs going forward. I think we could also explore arguments with other, uh, agreements with other cities for jail services as well. I further explore other creative opportunities to further offset police, court and city transportation planning and project costs with the projected, what was it? I think it was eight, eight million, uh, in, uh, budgeted to the traffic safety fund. Uh, this is a sharp increase over the twenty-three, twenty-four revenues, of course, as allowed by state law. I know that state law mandates these funds be used for traffic safety improvements, but we should look for additional opportunities to offset general fund expenses that meet this criteria. I would consider, I would continue to evaluate the value of the climate project coordinator position as well. Uh, let's look at grant secured and potential cost avoidance opportunities identified that by that position. Today, it may be possible to increase the focus of that position in these areas going forward. If we want to get creative, uh, we could consider things like public-private partnerships to address park maintenance, clean roads, et cetera. Think like the adopt a highway program, for example. Um, and lastly, after seeing where we get with those cost savings options potentially support property tax increase pending the levy lift. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, no, question number two.
That's mine. So, uh, the second question is, uh, Lake Forest Park is what they call built out, meaning there are not a lot of places to build new housing. What ideas do you have to increase the amount of affordable housing in Lake Forest Park?
Well, I think we need to consider affordable housing in Lake Forest Park within the context of state House Bill eleven-ten. Um, as you know, Washington House Bill eleven-ten requires cities like Lake Forest Park to allow more types of housing. We're required to accommodate middle housing like duplexes, triplexes and fourplexes based on proximity to transit, lot size, et cetera. I think the city has a role to play in being proactive in complying with the requirements and at the same time better support affordable housing. Proactively managing compliance allows the city to shape growth rather than react to it. It also allows Lake Forest Park to negotiate affordability incentives. This bill, eleven-ten, sets baseline requirements for middle housing up to four. However, it also permits cities to allow more than four units per lot if at least one or more units are income restricted affordable housing. This is where we can look at ordinances that allow developers to say build five or six units in some areas if certain affordability, affordability conditions are met. As a small-time real estate investor myself, I understand the power these incentives have in guiding developers to help address affordable housing. Some other ideas include offering pre-approved plans for fourplexes, duplexes or ADUs to reduce barriers that make construction more affordable. For example, the city of Seattle offers pre-approved plans for ADUs to homeowners. They provide a gallery of pre-approved designs, a step-by-step guide to the ADU process in a search tool to identify feasibility of adding ADUs. We could think of something like that. Incidentally, Kirkland also offers pre-approved ADU plans. Uh, this can make the cost of housing more affordable while preserving Lake Forest Park's character. Other incentives we can look at include height or lot coverage bonuses, reducing parking minimums, faster permit reviews or waiver of certain city fees or affordable units. I know the planning commission has worked extensively on this with consultants to consider these ideas and I'd certainly look for these incentives to be included in the planning commission's recommendations to the council, which I believe, uh, is coming up on maybe the fifteenth or so. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Question number three, whose question is that?
That's.
Yeah, Paula.
Hey.
Councilmember Good.
Given what you know about the current city budget concerns, would you advocate to cut services or propose a property tax ballot to the community? If you advocate to reduce services, what services in the general fund would you start looking into?
Well, uh, I believe in a balanced, multi-pronged approach to addressing the city budget concerns. While I do think we need revenue increases to address these concerns, revenue increases alone are not the answer to long-term financial sustainability. I believe it is our responsibility to regularly review costs and seek efficiency while maintaining high levels of service to the community. Public safety is one of the largest expenses in the general fund comprising over thirteen million dollars in the current budget, not including the sub-funds. With calls for service rates, uh, broadly falling over the last five to seven years, I'd like to commend our public safety departments. They've done a great job in keeping our community safe. I don't propose any staffing changes or reduction in services at the moment. However, there could likely be additional pockets of savings within, uh, public safety. Uh, we've already talked about offsetting some traffic safety expenses as permitted by law from the traffic safety fund. Uh, but we could also look at a partial continuation of the deferment of vehicle replacements, for example. Believe there were something like seven vehicles maybe that were proposed for deferment. We could look at potential service life and consider partial replacement, uh, during the next budget, particularly as we propose more e-bike patrols around town center in the Burke Gellman. I think the total proposed savings from those deferments is around two hundred thousand dollars. Going back to public safety, I think we could also look at nine-one-one dispatch expenses. They've risen by over a quarter of a million dollars since the last budget. It's about seventy-eight percent increase. And this is happening as again, calls for service have generally decreased. I look to our current dispatch service contract for potential renegotiation or consider cost-sharing opportunities with other local cities and municipalities. Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to question number four, who's, what's her riddle?
Thank you, mayor. So given the short duration of this appointment term, what? It's okay. What big ideas, uh, do you feel like you can move forward, uh, within this timeframe?
Well, I think there are several high-impact ideas that I can move forward in this timeframe. Uh, with the deadline for compliance of HB eleven-ten rapidly approaching, I believe I have the ability, background and experience to consider the proactive middle housing plan recommendations from the planning commission. I look forward to working with the council on that. Uh, in this short timeframe, I also see opportunities to support the levy, lid lift ballot measure proposed, excuse me, for November, particularly around community input and communication. I think that's important. Potentially leading or co-hosting neighborhood pop-ups or other community conversations around the levy lid lift. Um, I'd be excited to help staff pursue public-private relationships for things like green infrastructure and park cleaning and maintenance to potentially offset some other expenses. And also, uh, to work with the budget and finance committee to ensure sustainable budget and help lead continual cost reviews. I'd seek opportunities to leverage technologies to drive efficiencies that ultimately reduce cost while maintaining or improving uh, levels of service that the community expects.
Thank you. Question number five. Councilmember Holden.
Yes, um, describe a time that you had a disagreement with people but were able to reach a consensus or a compromise.
Uh, okay, I'll, I'll talk a little bit about the creation of an innovation forum in my professional life. So, as an R and D leader with the, within an R and D organization, I believe strongly and passionately that, uh, an R and D organization should aggressively and intentionally, um, drive innovation. And part of this, I believe, is through, uh, an ongoing innovation forum. And I'll spare you the details of the forum here, but my proposal was facing pushback from division leadership. Um, this was the disagreement, so, uh, they swiftly, uh, killed, uh, this idea. Uh, but I strongly believed in this initiative. Uh, I persisted. My steps in resolving this disagreement involved first understanding the position of the division leadership. I scheduled time with them to review their position and concerns and learned some history that I wasn't initially aware of. Um, I then formed a small working committee to connect people that had knowledge of that history and then worked with the committee to create a draft innovation process. This is really driving innovation from ideation to IP filing to ultimately commercialization and incorporated the concerns of the senior leadership and those past learnings. And then gathered input, input from a broad range of stakeholders and brought this plan back to leadership and stakeholders. There were some minor back and forths and some compromises that we made about how to roll out the initiative. But fast forward a few weeks later and division leadership greenlit the program and ultimately, uh, we're very supportive of it and I'm excited to, uh, lead our division closer to the goal of being the most innovative division and, uh, organization.
Thank you. Question number six, identify, I'm sorry, I'm starting to read. Councilmember Saunders, this must be yours.
Thank you.
Um, identify the top two policy issues facing Lake Forest Park and briefly state how you would approach them.
I believe the top two immediate policy issues facing the city of Lake Forest Park are first, long-term financial stability and second, the pressing need to address the middle housing before the June thirtieth deadline. And I believe right now those are the most pressing issues, given the, given the deadlines. For long-term financial stability, I see a multi-pronged approach. As I detailed earlier, I believe there are more opportunities for cost controls, including negotiating existing contracts, seeking alternative vendors for some services, particularly around public safety where we've seen significant cost increases. I would look at the potential for public partner, private, public-private partnerships to help offset some operational costs. And for additional ways, we can use the traffic safety fund to help support long-term financial sustainability. Over the past couple of decades, the population of Lake Forest Park has remained relatively flat, plus or minus ten percent fluctuations in population. I think it's important that the city keeps staffing levels also relatively constant in these times as well. However, to do this, and it might have increasing demands in nearly all areas, it's important to continually seek ways to drive efficiency, including adoption of technology to streamline processes and improve throughput without significantly increasing costs. More pressing is the upcoming levy lid lift proposal, which will play an important role in long-term financial stability. As the consultant Liz Loomis Public Affairs wraps up their contract, there is work to do leading up to the certification for the ballot. I would review and work to implement recommendations from this work. Middle housing is also a top priority, uh, facing the city of Lake Forest Park at the moment, with the recommendations for compliance with HB eleven-ten coming from the planning commission in just a few short days and a deadline approaching at the end of the month. I would work with members of the council to, uh, to review those recommendations along with community input from the hearing on July twelfth, I believe. Um, after considering the public input and the planning commission's recommendations, I look forward to working with the council to adopt the final ordinances, implementing the required code amendments by the, or do you?
Great, thank you. Uh, at this point, we're gonna move on to follow-up questions for candidates. Would you, what's your preference, council? Would you like to do it by raising hand or would you like to just go down the dais? What's your pleasure?
Uh, we just go down, uh, just go down the dais.
Do you start with Councilmember Good, if you're amenable?
Me?
Or we can start at the other end?
Yeah, cause I have my notes, so.
If, are you?
Am I prepared?
Yes, thank you. Saunders.
Are we, are we addressing specific questions we may have had on some, on any of the questions?
Okay, leave as you, as you wish.
Okay. Wait one second, I thought I had. Well, I guess I had a couple of questions, but, but, um, this one in particular, I, could you, you mentioned something on question number three about, um, the public safety. And, um, I just wanted to know if you could talk more about that, about the public safety, um, I didn't, wasn't clear on what you meant by if it were cuts to or increases to and then the nine-one, nine-one-one program that you mentioned. Okay.
Public safety is one of the largest expenses in the general fund. It's about a third of the expenses, I believe. Um, so I, I think that that's an area where we can look for potential cost savings. Um, you know, I, I think that, um, uh, what I wouldn't propose right now necessarily is staff reductions right now. But with a budget of that size, I think we can find some efficiencies in, um, operating expenses without impacting, uh, services. And the nine-one-one dispatch, oh, uh, just to go back to public safety, we have some contracts that have increased substantially since the twenty-three, twenty-four budget that I think could be, uh, renegotiated to control price increases going forward. We'll potentially find other vendors for jail services, for example. So that all falls under the public safety, um, line item.
Okay.
I think the, also for public safety, we have the nine-one-one dispatch service expenses too, that's a contracted service. And those have increased, uh, substantially as well, um, around seventy-eight percent, uh, since the last biennium. Um, and I think there's an opportunity there to put in some price controls through negotiations or look at other service providers as well.
Great, thank you.
Let's go on to Councilmember, uh, Bulke.
Sure. Um, so in your introduction, you mentioned, um, environmental stewardship. And I was hoping you could comment, um, are there any areas, any policy areas you'd like to, the city to focus uh, regarding our natural environment or climate change?
I think, um, I think it's important to, um, continue to develop, uh, waterfront, um, projects in a way that's environmentally responsible as well and to look for um, federal grants potentially that will help drive those projects forward in a way that is sustainable as well. So we have a number of streams that run through the community and I think it's important if you want the health of those streams uh, to, um, you know, to, to remain, then, uh, we need to take, um, action to keep those streams healthy as well. So we look into that.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Fertani?
Yeah, I just want a clarification on the kind of question I can ask. Is this more like a dissertation where you can ask anything?
Colleagues, a response.
I interpreted follow-up as there should be some tie-in as something he said.
Yeah. Okay.
Some super tie-in.
All right.
Councilmember Good, Councilmember Lebo, are you?
Fine with that.
Okay, make sure we're all on the same page.
Okay.
Please, carry on.
All right, so I'll slightly change my question then. Um, so the, uh, the answer that you had to my question regarding middle housing, um, just wondering, uh, given that, uh, the city has very few resources in order to incentivize developers to build the kind of housing that is affordable. What do you see as basically some of the ways that, what, what ideas can you bring to the table of how we incentivize this? We have no problem with the zoning thing, we just have this issue with trying to get people to do it.
Uh, if I understood the question right, going back to the House Bill eleven-ten, I think there are some opportunities in there to incentivize developers. Is that what you're referring to? So, I think that program caps the, the middle housing at fourplexes. Developers would have, uh, a desire to add five or six, uh, plex units on a single lot. In certain areas where that makes sense, I think we could explore that, but, uh, that I think the House Bill has a provision that, uh, those five to six unit developments would need to have some, um, income cap, uh, requirements for, for, uh, for the rents in those properties as well. So, um, I, I think that's a big incentive, uh, right there as well, including the fees and some other things I mentioned earlier about streamlining the permitting process and also providing plans for ADUs and, um, and, uh, middle housing, uh, designs for developers that, um, might incentivize, um, affordable housing.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor, thank you. Councilmember Riddle?
Thank you.
Pardon me.
You mentioned a couple of times, community input. We've had hits and misses with community input. What has been successful for you? Maybe that you've engaged in with the city or what would you say has been the most successful kind of community input engagement that you've experienced?
I think maybe a couple of things. I think it's great to have a kiosk at the farmer's market, for example. It's a way to reach the community that's out there and engaged. It's not gonna reach everyone. I think another great tool was the survey that was sent out about the levy lid, lid lift as well. And I think, um, I think, I think those were, I, I important ways of reaching the community. And I think, uh, there should be a continued effort in communicating with the community off through whatever those issues.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lebo?
I'm good. Thank you for the presentation and the discussion.
That's good. Or do I need to go back to either?
I don't know. I have, I'm going to follow up on, on the question number two. That there's not a lot of places to build in Lake Forest Park. You know, we have a lot of critical areas, a lot of water under the ground. Uh, so where would you think that, or where would you look to develop? Since we're, we're primarily private lot. And, you know, we don't own town center.
I, I think it really has to be done in that case through incentives. Um, and, and. You know, we'll see the recommendation from the, from the planning uh, committee, but um, in those cases, incentives are a big tool for us to use to direct development. Particularly around um, the transportation corridors. Um, so I, I, I really see incentives and. I think also again, providing uh, plans for ADUs to developers. They can just take these. I think the city of Seattle would be a great model for um. Helping streamline that process for ADU build out. And if we could extend that, not just ADUs like Seattle and Kirkland, but potentially to middle housing duplexes. And I know there's not a lot of area for, for development, but um, at least removing some of those roadblocks might move the needle.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, council member. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Weber. Uh, we will be um, moving on next to our next candidate. And before, uh, before we do that, thank you very much. Before that, just procedurally, folks, how about next go around, since we started this end? Councilmember Good, are you amenable to doing the follow-up questions on this track?
Yes.
Okay, just so we didn't catch you on the spot. I apologize for that, Paula. Um, okay, and we're next moving on to Sam Orelli. Right, pronounce your name correctly, Sam.
Absolutely.
Okay, apologize if I didn't. Welcome, Sam. You have um. Five minutes for your candidate introduction.
So, good evening, everyone, and thank you for considering me for this position. Um, before I want to start just right off the cuff as saying, after I looked at your approved uh, budget that you've all done. I was just really impressed with your accomplishments for that you did. And I just wanted to thank you upfront for just your public service. Um, as I stated in my application, I have been a proud, proud member of the community for forty-four years as an adult. Uh, before I lived in Lake Forest Park, I grew up in the Green Lake area in North Seattle. I went to Blanchett High School, which is now Bishop Blanchett High School. Uh, I am a business graduate from the University of Washington. I owned a small business, a small mortgage business. Where we specialized in foreclosure bailout and bankruptcy bailout. And I did that for sixteen years. Because of the debacle in the real estate market in two thousand eight, unfortunately I had to fold that company. And I, I was lucky enough to get on at uh, WA Fed Bank on one hundred and forty-fifth and fifteenth, so about seven minutes away from my house. Uh, where I was a branch manager and I became a vice president there. I did primarily the residential lending. And I did that for seventeen years and I looked at a lot of applications, a lot of financial statements and credit. And I'm very good at assessing risk. Uh, when I first moved into the neighborhood here in Lake Forest Park. Uh, I was a, a person in his early twenties, young man. And so I decided to read the CCNRs when I first got in my, it was my first house. And I didn't know that they would be as boring as they were. But there were two things that I remembered when I was reading those CCNRs. One of them was no people of color. And I thought to myself, that couldn't be right, because I just bought this house and this property. And the other one that I remember is no multifamily dwellings at the time. I believe this needs to be changed and amended. Um. What you get with me is persistency, consistency. Integrity, authenticity. What I did to build business when I was at WA Fed Bank as a lender, I, I'm a people person. I like to palm press. I was out in the community and uh, shaking hands and meeting people. I met real estate agents. Hundreds, thousands of them here in Windermere, North Seattle uh, shoreline. That was my job. And that's what I, I just love being out in the marketplace like that. You know, what I want to leave on the table is a little slice of my diversity. And perspective from my experience, living and doing business and raising my family here in Lake Forest Park.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Orelli. Colleagues, we'll start with um, question number one. Councilmember Lebo.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Orelli. Lake Forest Park is currently experiencing fiscal challenges, general fund expenditures exceeding revenues. In the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six biennium, the city council utilized approximately eight hundred thousand from its nearly seven-point-three million in allocated fund balance. Excluded reserves designated for emergencies. While the city has taken steps to reduce expenses, it has worked to preserve essential public services. Looking ahead, a projected budget shortfall of approximately one-point-six million is anticipated for the twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-eight biennium. How would you propose addressing this projected imbalance? Please be specific in describing your approach.
Well, I believe this is the most critical of the current issues in Lake Forest Park. I have a son who is a career counselor at Shorecrest High School. He's also the co-vice president and uh, uh, for the union for the support, uh, employee support staff. And we talk about budgeting and restraints all the time, because he's a, a union member, right? And the, the limitations of uh, the Shoreline School District. You know, in fact, um, basically we need to, we need to find more money. Is where I'm, I'm totally going fat uh, at this behalf. Uh, the council has done a, a wonderful job in doing exactly what I would have done. Line by line, expenses, revenue. You've already done it. Your colleagues in front of you in previous years have already done it. I mean, I'm not going to even say that I'm anywhere near as smart as any of you up there. So I know you must have already hit that. I think um. The, you've balanced the budget and unfortunately you did not find a, a permanent cure. I mean, there's a permanent cure that we need to find here. We need to find a way to make more money. And that's the first thing that I would explore. This would be my initial approach. John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to question number two.
Thank you, Mr. Orelli. Um, Lake Forest Park is what they call built out, meaning there are not a lot of places to build new housing. What ideas do you have to increase the amount of affordable housing in Lake Forest Park?
Um. Intro- in the introduction, I talked about uh, CCNRs. And agreeing with Mr. Weber, uh, we need multifamily units. ADUs, DIDUs, it's a perfect supply and demand issue. With more housing comes level prices. Uh, what the city could be proactive, like Mr. Weber said, is having pre-approved templates. For ADUs, DADUs, six hundred to twelve hundred square feet. It would streamline the construction, uh, construction process. And uh, make things quicker. The quicker the construction projects are completed, the quicker the revenue. Uh, we need to keep the permit fees also reasonable. And at the same time. Uh, give incentives for the lower and middle income housing to build. We do have to follow in Seattle's footsteps for density. I mean, the, the bin, the big difference is density that works here in Lake Forest Park. There is no additional land, no additional waterfront property. We have to become more dense. Dense to a point. Do we want, do we want uh, Lake Forest Park to be like Ballard? No, nothing against Ballard. We all live here for a reason and we all um. Prize our privacy. But times are changing and compromise is the answer. Seattle provides more, well, uh, allows up to four plus properties. Uh, zero lot line townhomes, smaller buildable lots, less restrictions to permits, height restrictions. We need serious options for the future, at the same time maintaining the charm of the community. That we call home in Lake Forest Park. And of course, we have to take into consideration in building these low and middle income type rental units that they need to be on public uh, transportation highways.
Thank you. Thank you. Question number three.
Given what you know about the current city budget concerns, would you advocate to cut services or propose a property tax ballot to the community? If you advocate for reduced, to reduce services, what services in the general fund would you start looking into?
So I, I kind of touched on this before. Um, you all looked at line by line expenses and revenues. I think that's not the direction that we need to go. So cutting positions. And this is another one where I talked to my son about cutting positions is a really tough thing. Um, people are hurting right now. And so maybe we can do other items like furloughs or not increasing. Um, compensation for a time. Uh, for a short time, because we want to also keep, maintain and keep our valuable people as well. Um. I know we, I know the council and the, and uh, the administration wants to hire more people. Maybe we could consolidate some of their job functions. Give them a little bit more compensation for a little bit more work. You know, are the current positions operating at maximum efficiency? And possibly adding more property levies and uh, property taxes for the shorter term or longer term to fund positions. Because community safety is a priority. Maybe we could use a public safety levy to compensate our police personnel and supplement the general fund. Basically, we really have to do a good job selling people on tax increases. I think the people can get behind a tax increase if the, they can see the benefit to themselves and the community.
Thank you. Move on to question number four.
So given the short duration of this appointment term, what big ideas do you feel that you can actually move forward with in this timeframe?
So I don't know if I have big ideas, but because of the short term of this appointment. You know, my thing is how can we find more money? And as I mentioned, I say one of the solutions is density. How else can we get additional revenue from the same real estate? You know, we have to try to squeeze more money from what we have. You know, one of the questions that came up on the additional questions was private ownership. I mean, trying to make it easy for them to, to build an ADU or a DADU. You know, it gets a little bit more complicated, I know, because I was a lender at WA Fed when they start building more than four units. Then it's commercial. And, and nobody talks to them about that before they go to seminars to talk to them about this. Oh yeah, let's go over four units. Well. Very difficult for financing, because it's now, no longer residential financing, it is commercial financing. Um. Another, uh, another thing that we could do is in public safety. So. You know, maybe we have a public safety levy to compensate our police personnel and supplement the general fund.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Um, question number five. Councilmember Golden.
Yes, can you describe a time that you had a disagreement with people but were able to reach a consensus or a compromise?
So being a branch manager of a, a bank, a local bank. I have to face the public all the time. And one of the things that occasionally comes up is you have a little hiccup in your checking account. And then you come to one of the bank personnel and say, could you waive this fee? WA Fed's policy is if the bank did not do anything wrong. We charge the fee. And that's what I did. I, I followed policy. You know, I like, if, if, you know, it wasn't the bank's fault. We, the bank didn't do anything wrong. I like skin in the game. What happened most of the time is I would compromise. And I would waive half that fee. And figure it's a win-win situation. And they still have skin in the game.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, and finally, question number, excuse me, question number six.
Identify the top two policy issues facing Lake Forest Park and briefly state how you would approach them.
The top two, the top two seemingly is all, is going to be again, the budget and financial stability. You know, and in this, I believe everything is on the table. Furloughs, wage freezes, consolidating positions. Reviewing staff and executive management for productivity, changing zoning rules. Increasing density, outsourcing certain positions to save money on full-time compensation. Adding taxes. You know, the city council has already gone through the budget. I've said that before. I mean, I don't believe you can whip a dead horse and get more out of there. I mean, it needs to be reviewed periodically to see if there is waste somewhere. But I think we'd be more successful in trying to create more money than trying to cut more budgets. I think you've already done a good job doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to follow-up questions, council member.
I'm ready now. Is there another policy issue that you believe is important that has not been addressed?
Um, Mr. Weber brought up. The, the transportation going through, you know, let's call it sound transit. I'm retired at WA Fed now, but I had to go through the fact that. Sound Transit is taking the old location of my bank. Truly, you could, we didn't have much, you know, with eminent domain. What we have, and I'm talking about the bank, what we had control of is how much are we going to get for that property? Yes, you, you only wanted our area for our safety deposit boxes and our lunchroom and our bathroom. Up to our drive-through window, but what about the rest of the bank? And what about the Pizza Hut building that we owned? You know, if you're buying us, you're buying it all and you're buying it at fair market value. And so I know there, there's talk in the neighborhood about. You know, communication about, you know, light rail going through there. We have to push back and, and stand up for ourselves in Lake Forest Park. I think that's what we have to do as a community to try to, to try to, it's, it's, it's going to happen. But we have to stick to our guns and uh, to stand up for what we want to get out of it and hope for the best.
Councilmember Lebo.
Thank you. Um, so over several biennium, Lake Forest Park was fortunate to build up the um, unallocated funds for our general, general fund. At what point would you decide to spend those funds instead of asking the voters for a levy increase? My question is, do you spend the money that you've built up or do you ask the voters for more money?
So you're asking a banker. And my conservative answer would be. You ask for more money. I think we have to do a, a really good sales job on that. I think, like I mentioned. I think we have to do a a really good sales job on that. I think, like I mentioned. If you if the public sees what they're getting from it, John, if they see what they're gonna get for their safety, for sidewalks. I think they can see the money being spent. I think it'd be a last resort before we dip into the unallocated funds, before we spend that. It's, I think it's a hail Mary, in my opinion. Because that's not the answer for the long run.
So a riddle.
Thank you. I don't know if I have a good follow-up question. I think uh.
You can think about it and I could take the next question.
I guess the one thing is about these prefab ADUs and such. Your experience, have you, do you have direct experience with those?
I finance some of those ADUs and DADUs.
So one of the comments that I hear is it's still complicated. It still costs a lot of money. Have you seen them be a cost savings for for people to actually be able to use those prefab or pre-approved plans?
Um, I haven't done a a prefab uh loan on that, but I do know they're out there and I do believe that they will save money. I mean, we have a design build firm here right in Lake Forest Park. I looked at that one before I was going to the gym and I thought, wow, if they could put together something, you know, to build additional units. That there's even prefab units if if you could get them approved in the city and put them up. They're they're pretty inexpensive. They look great. You know, it costs four hundred to six hundred thousand dollars to build some of these ADUs and DADUs. It's a lot of money. You know, you have to offset that with the rent that you plan on getting from that. And even permitting, you know, thirty, forty thousand dollars for permits. You know, dropping the timeframe from six months on the fast in Seattle, that's Seattle, to over two years in some cases that I've seen. Because of back and forth, back and forth, because they have to go back on on altering the plans. And you want to get, if if density is an answer here, we need to get those built quickly because that's when it brings in more revenue.
Thank you.
Captain Murphertal. All right, thank you. Um so I appreciate your answer so far. Um you mentioned the racially discriminatory C C N Rs. And I'm wondering, what is your experience with trying to get those scrubbed?
I I at the time in my early twenties, Tracy, I that wasn't, I was just reading the C C N Rs at the time. I think possibly getting an amendment, which I'm sure there's already amendment because that's why I was able to 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 buy. But having it in the first place in there, and I'm gonna say ninety-eight percent of the people, well, ninety-seven percent of the people do not read the C C N Rs. I did because I was young and first house and I thought that's what you're supposed to do.
Thank you. That's our golden. Yes, um so a couple of times you've mentioned increasing housing density in Lake Forest Park.
Yeah.
And I was wondering, do you have a sense for sort of what level of density you'd like to see, depending on if it's near transit or or not?
You know, there's a few, you're either zero lot line, zero lot line townhomes or duplexes that are really close to the gas stations there. So only ones that I've ever seen. And it's unfortunate that I wasn't able to get into those, but they were really cheap. But I I think the incentive issue that Mr. Weber brought up is really important. I mean, most of it is private. You have uh properties down the quarter that have acreage. And, you know, one, two acres, it's like, what? You know, I had no idea. But they're there and it's trying to convince them either that or time won't come when when existing property owners pass away and it moves on to the next. The centers in Seattle was making it easier to build more properties and get money. People were interested in getting money. And do I have an idea, oh, how how dense? Obviously, up to four units, if it can support it, would be best because of the financing. It's easier. Thirty-year, well, the interest rates aren't low now, but thirty-year financing is attractive if you can get four percent rates or five percent rates.
Thank you. Councilman Saunders.
You'll have to forgive me if you already mentioned this and I just had forgotten. But as you're probably aware, we have um an upcoming situation where we're going to um request a a levy lift and um the police chief in particular is looking for funding for um more uh police vehicles as they're aging. And I just was wondering how you would address that. Have you had a chance to think about that or have you had a chance to read about it and how would you approach?
I
And how do you feel about the the levy lift or potential levy lift?
Well. You know, nobody on your side, on on the other side as taxpayers, don't like to see taxes go up. They just don't. Especially now when everything is going up. I think if we can show um the improvements uh and the safety issue is, you know, the beauty about Seattle, the beauty about Lake Forest Park is when you call the police, they come. You know, I work for a bank. Well, they'd come if we're being robbed. But if there's a homeless person camping out and making a ruckus. You know, maybe they'll come. So I think if the people can see that beyond just the increase in in taxes, that what they get is people coming. Public service. That they'd be more able to dip into their pocketbooks and and you know, get the services that they're that they need when they want it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Your colleagues. Thank you, Mr. Rallo.
Thank you.
We appreciate your time. Hey. Let me set my stopwatch here. I'm just making sure we're staying within our our allotted parameters and timeframe. So with that, we're gonna move on to Sebastian Casada. Welcome, Sebastian.
Good evening, councilmembers. Uh I promise I own a a suit jacket. I decided to bring it today. Uh I'm Sebastian and I I want to thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council for your time and opportunity to interview for this position today. Uh I think something that's beautiful is that I have never met any of you all or any of you all today. But we're here for a a cause, right? We all love this community, love this city, and we want to do everything we can to keep it the way it's always been, the character and the safety and everything that comes along with it. How we go about it, you know, there's many perspectives, but um I'm very much looking forward to being a part of the council for this very short time. A bit about uh a bit about myself, I grew up in Florida. I went to the University of Florida. Uh I have a bachelor's degree in aerospace engineering. After college, I moved up to the Pacific Northwest. I started working at Boeing as an aerospace engineer and I had several roles within Boeing. Uh I had the opportunity to uh move away during COVID, um you know, as the the job market turned down during those times. And moved back uh in twenty twenty-one. I was very fortunate to uh get married to my lovely wife. She's probably watching off online, so. And she grew up here. One of the things that uh she told me once we got married is we're saving up for a home and there is one particular place I want to live. And the place she told me is Lake Forest Park. So for a couple of years, we saved up for our house and fortunate enough, we were able to purchase our home about two years ago. And you know, that's relatively not that long ago compared to the length of, you know, how ever, how long everyone has been living here. But I I fell in love with this community and I have a very strong vested interest in for the community to do well. And the reason is because uh one day we will have kids that will grow up in this neighborhood. They're not born yet, of course, but one day perhaps hopefully they will. And whether as a community, we make not-so-good decisions or we make good decisions, they will grow up here. So that's why I want to become part of the council, even if it's just for a small amount of time. One one of the reasons I realized that local government is extremely important is because, as I mentioned, I grew up in Florida. And I lived through uh the devastating hurricanes in two thousand and five. And when an emergency such as a hurricane or earthquake happens, the federal government is not there in ten minutes to help you. It's the local government. It's the policies that you have enacted. And all the the community that comes together. So that's another reason why I want to be a part of this of this council. Um that's a little bit uh about myself. Uh, yep.
Great. Thank you. Well, let's dive right into the questions here, everybody.
I I would like to add one more thing and I'm sorry. So uh about two years ago, as my wife and I were saving up for our home to live here, we were living with my in-laws and we had a house fire at the time. And it was very devastating. The insurance paid out some money to rebuild the home. However, uh the money wasn't enough to rebuild the home completely. So I took on the role of being a general contractor in the rebuild. And what I did is I created an A D U out of the home. So I learned all of the I R C codes. I worked through with the city directly. It was another city, not Lake Forest Park. All of the the planning department, building officials, inspectors, to be able to create the A D U. And one thing I learned is that many people don't understand what an A D U is, what the rules are in terms of code. Legal information and that's one thing that I would like to also contribute to in this community.
Thank you. Let's jump right in here. Question number one, Councilmember Lebo.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Casada, for the presentation. As you've heard earlier, Lake Forest Park is currently experiencing fiscal challenges with general fund expenditures exceeding revenues. In the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six biennium, the city council utilized approximately eight hundred thousand from its nearly seven point three million in unallocated fund balance. This excluded any reserves designated for emergencies. While the city has taken steps to reduce expenses, it has worked to preserve essential public services. Looking ahead, a projected budget shortfall of approximately one point six million is anticipated in the twenty-seven, twenty-eight biennium. How would you propose addressing this projected imbalance and please be specific about your approach?
Yep, so uh by trade, I'm a systems engineer, so I'm trained to start with the need in order to solve a problem. And I think the need is to be able to provide a community to the residents that is within what what they want and they desire. I think the character of this town is what we need to preserve. And that's why we should have a uh detailed long-term financial strategy. Looking at our long-term goals in our short-term goals. We should be evaluating our current spending. The city has already been evaluating the the current spending, but I think that's something that should be continuous. We should be continuously auditing our spending. And after that, prioritize the spending that we do have. We have critical spending, essential spending and discretionary spending. In my opinion, the most important part of the critical slash essential spending is security and the police. I have interacted with the police on a couple of times um in my neighborhood and it has been great experience. I think uh the key to this neighborhood is being able to walk around at night. Being it being sure that my wife is at home alone and I feel safe. These are the essential services that I would propose not to cut. I would look at what are our continuous upward pressures? What are the uh services or or costs that are continuing to pressure the budget and make sure those are are managed? And explore revenue opportunities. Um one of the things I would look at is grants and perhaps small utility tax if if possible. But the most important thing is to make sure that the public is engaged in what the options are. I, as I mentioned, I moved here two years ago, so I did not know much about the community. But I did receive the flyer in the mail that told us about the the budget constraints and how in the election um there was gonna be a ballot to vote to increase the the taxes. And I very, very much appreciated that. Uh I also very much appreciate the the social media presence, the Instagram presence, because that's how I get information as well. So um essentially evaluating our current spending and looking at revenue opportunities that the last thing I would do as an option would be to increase taxes. But I would not be afraid to be able to propose that if that would mean we would have to cut essential spending if we did not do that.
Okay, question number two, Deputy Murphertal.
Thank you, Mr. Casada. Lake Forest Park is what they call built out, meaning there are not a lot of places to build new housing. What ideas do you have to increase the amount of affordable housing in Lake Forest Park?
As I mentioned, I I have experience in in A D Us, so that's what I would propose would be one of the the solutions. Uh there's detached A D Us, but there's also attached A D Us and there's certain code requirements that are required of each. And there's, of course, some benefits, some drawbacks. I think there's not enough um communication to residents, not only in the city, but just in general of how to do an A D U, what do you need, what are the prices involved? Being able to communicate that to the residents would be able to streamline that and help that. As Ms. Ms. Good said, you know, we don't have many places to build. We don't own the town center. Many, because this community is so great, you don't see people selling that often. Able to incentivize people to sell, I don't think is probably the most optimal strategy. ADUs would be, in my opinion, the way to go. You know, we could streamline permitting, uh depending on the city, permits could take a long time. But if we're able to streamline that, that would be helpful for seniors, young families like like myself. Triplexes and duplexes are also um an option, but I don't think it's as feasible as A D Us with existing houses.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's move on to uh question number three, Councilmember Good.
Okay, given what you know about the current city budget concerns, would you advocate to cut services or propose a property tax ballot to the community? If you advocate to reduce services, what services in the general fund would you start looking into?
I wouldn't propose any cuts to essential services at this time. I would look to see if there's any uh capital improvements that we can defer. Uh in terms of the police requesting additional vehicles, I think that's important and I would not want to impact that. However, I think a ballot would be an appropriate choice because it allows the community to choose. And as I mentioned, being upfront and transparent with the community would help that decision be informed. There's a, and I'll just say there's many taxes that we all pay. The Lake Forest Park tax is the least I'm concerned about. That's the, the most important.
Councilmember Riddle, question number four.
So given the short duration of this appointment term, what big ideas do you feel that you could move forward in that amount of time?
So as, as we mentioned, our, our fiscal financial issues uh are the city's top priority. So I would propose to create a dashboard on uh the Lake Forest Park website, which shows how uh the uh funds are spent and allocated within the city. And being able to point residents via QR code, you know, being at the market on, on the weekends or something like that would help uh raise the concern. This concern, you know, while it, it is technically on paper, it is a concern for all of the city, so everyone should be aware. I, I feel like that's one impact I could create in the first six months. And of course, create the roadmap, the foundation, listen to the residents for the next person that would come uh after the, the November election. I also would like to identify any funding for green infrastructure or also anything related to our trees, uh our streams, um specifically our trees. As part of the, the rebuild that I, I mentioned, there were some trees that were unhealthy that fell. And I think if um the community, the neighbors had known how to take care of their trees, how to keep them healthy, those trees would have been saved. And I think one of the things that makes this community so beautiful is our trees. And whether that's protecting them by helping them uh remove invasive species or ivy, that's something I would also want to, to help with um in this brief time.
Thank you. Moving on to question number five, Councilmember Goldman.
Yes, um, can you describe a time that you had a disagreement with people but were able to reach a consensus or compromise?
Yep, absolutely. So a few years ago, I joined a engineering team where I was responsible for supporting production of a large airplane. And that particular model of airplane was uh being already built for thirty, forty years. You can probably guess what the airplane might be. But there was many processes that dated to the nineties and even eighties. One of the processes was a part of this production process. A stack of papers would be printed for each airplane about this thick. And um you would have to go through the uh documents line by line and highlight. So I proposed to streamline that by not printing it out and having it stored digitally. And the team at first disagreed because, you know, that's how we always used to do it. There was many traditional processes in place. But I was able to convince them to allow me to do part of the paperwork virtually. And once that streamlined part of the process, I was able to compromise with them and slowly phase in going fully digital. And that ultimately supported the team goals and company goals and speeding up ba- basically the production. You know, I, I, I think when we're working in, in, in a team, we won't always agree, but we always want the best thing for what we're working for. So even if we disagree, we can always find a common ground to agree. So I think that's the, the key.
Thank you. Moving on to question number six, Councilmember Saunders.
Identify the top two policy issues facing Lake Forest Park and briefly state how you would approach them.
As I, I mentioned, the, the first issue is the financial sustainability. Going into our unallocated funds is uh a solution in the short term, but not for the long term. That's something that probably not only Lake Forest Park is facing, but many other towns as well. Um, and even at a, you know, um residents themselves, you know, there's always financial difficulties, especially during this time. So I think that's something that I would approach. As I mentioned, categorizing what's critical, essential discretionary and what can be deferred. The, the second policy issue would be, um, and maybe I'm, I'm biased in this answer, but it's protecting the environment. Protecting the trees, the shoreline, the streams, and keeping this city family centered, keeping it safe, strong police force. That would be my, my main two policy issues because, you know, i- if you run into fiscal issues and you cut something that's critical, you cut something that's essential, then something will fall by the wayside. If it's, if you're not protecting the environment or trees or shoreline or the residents, you know, that it, you haven't, something goes wrong if you start doing that. So I think those two issues are tied together.
Thank you.
Thank you. My colleagues, who started from that end, we started from this end. Shall we start from the middle? Deputy Mayor, would you like to start with the follow-up? We'll go this way and then circle around.
All right. Thank you very much. And thank you for your answers to your questions. Um, I'd like to follow up on one of them. It's uh, um, you're mentioning that your approach to the budget would be to categorize essential versus um deferrable services. Essentially, uh, you know, I, I think I'm paraphrasing you there. Can you go into a little bit more detail about what you consider to be a deferrable service? In other words, what does the city do that you think might, you know, we could put off a bit?
I think any improvements to buildings could be something that could be deferred. But of course, it's something that you have to evaluate. If we're talking about stormwater um treatment or works, then that's not something we can defer. It's something that wouldn't impact safety, uh legal, or any critical infrastructure. If there is a knock on wood, you know, earthquake, what do we need right then and there to be able to respond? That is critical. If we don't need, you know, new air conditionings in this building or so forth, that could be deferred. We can open the windows, you know, in that case. So that's how I would categorize it.
Thank you. Councilmember Goldman.
Yes, um, I wanted to follow up on housing. So you, you talked about how you're, you're a big fan of ADUs.
Yes.
And you were a bit more skeptical about duplexes or triplexes. And I was hoping you could elaborate a bit more. You know, what is it that you, you think wouldn't work so well about duplexes?
I, I think duplexes, the main reason would be more difficult would be for the space. We are already built out and it would require residences possibly sell their home to be able to, for developers to uh make a duplex or triplex. So for that reason, I think it's more difficult. And it could be a long-term solution. Whereas an ADU could be a solution, we could see greater benefits in the short term.
Hey, thank you. Great, thank you. Councilmember Saunders, back to you.
I'm actually good. I don't have any, any follow-up questions, but thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Good.
I'll do the same question. Is there any other policy issue that you believe is facing Lake Forest Park that hasn't been addressed?
I believe that the sound transit issue um is key. I think as I, I walk my, my German Shepherd every day in the neighborhood and I've seen the red tags on all the trees um along the Buffalo Highway. And to think that all of those are going to be torn down, um, you know, impacts to the, the community. I think that is very difficult. I also think that, that crossing is very dangerous. I've seen quite a few people, uh, some cars run a red light. The one going to um Burgilman, I think it's one fifty-fifth or eighty-fifth.
One sixty?
Sixty-fifth, maybe, yeah. So I, I think those are a couple of issues. Pedestrian safety should be a top concern. You know, we should be able to, to walk safe, safely within the neighborhood. There's some areas that have sidewalks, some areas that don't, uh, Long Ballenger Way. I, I, I think it's not as safe to walk. So I think those are two, another key issue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lebo.
Thank you. So for several biennias, Lake Forest Park was fortunate enough to build up its um unallocated funds uh for a variety of reasons. And now we find ourselves in a position where we're have our expenditures are more than our, our general fund revenue. Would you spend the unallocated funds or would you ask the taxpayers for more money?
I would not spend the unallocated funds. I would spend the unallocated funds in a last resort if the ballot does not pass. I think once you have an unallocated fund and you spend it, getting it back is very difficult. Uh, I'm sure it was very hard work to build that safety net and to spend it when you could possibly do other measures would not be the best idea.
Thank you, Councilmember Riddle.
Thank you. Um, so you mentioned around the fiscal issues, a dashboard. I think one of the challenges that we might face is that's a new cost to go through and produce something like that. Do you have other ideas for how we can communicate our finances to the community?
I, I actually think a dashboard would, would not be fairly expensive, in, in my opinion. Of course, you might know more than, than I, but um I think another way you could communicate is through so- social media. As I mentioned, uh, Instagram is where I see all of the Lake Forest Park community events. You could always post it on, online um via your Instagram through a link to Lake Forest Park website. I think, you know, having webinars, uh, live sessions like the, the council does is important. But I think being active in places like the market is key.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Thank you very much, Mr. Kusada. Really appreciate your time. Do you know Tola Martz at Blue Origin? He's an ISOPA council member.
Oh, uh, I actually do work at Blue Origin. Who did you say?
Tola Martz. Origin, yeah.
Tola Martz.
Yeah, he was a director there for many, many years.
Oh, really? I, I haven't met him, but.
He's a long-term serving council member at ISOPA.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, wow. I look forward to meeting him.
Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it. And all of you, thank you so much for uh being willingness, your willingness to serve. No matter what the outcome is, uh, we are, I, and I know my colleagues here are incredibly heartwarming by your talents and your skills and the breadth of experience that you bring to the, to the table here. And I would also say, regardless of the outcome and what the council decides, please stay engaged. If you have any questions about budget, pedestrian safety, multimodal access, green infrastructure, any of those, please reach out to myself or, or my colleagues up here or staff. We'd be happy to answer those questions. And we do sincerely thank you for your time. So thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that, folks, we're moving on to an executive session, review of city council candidate qualifications per RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero. Prendes one, prendes H. Uh, Deputy Mayor, what are you thinking about timeframe for this?
I'm thinking fifteen. Council, what do you think?
Twenty, just in case we get talking. Twenty minutes on the nine.
Okay, colleagues, thank you, everybody. Another to read. No, that's, that's it. This is the RCW. So um we will, I, I were, Ms. Pratt, we're remaining here. Okay. Thank you.
What about the recording?
Okay, so we're going to adjourn to executive session for, for twenty minutes. Okay. And I called the, the Lake Forest Park City Council Special Meeting back to session from executive, executive session, pardon me. We're moving on to item C overview of the mayor's authority. Set authority to vote in the case of a tie per the governance manual and RCW thirty-six A dot one two dot one one zero zero. And colleagues, the reason why um I, I thought it was a good idea for this to bring this back is because that was an internal memo and for the edification to public and understanding for future generations of policymakers that understand some of the background behind this. Ms. Pratt.
You have two votes coming up um that with only six of you, it's a real possibility for. Sorry. Two votes coming up for council while you still only have six people, so a real possibility for a tie. And the, the gov manual um does say in the event of a tie, the motion is lost. But uh further review, the, the gov manual does go on and recognize the RCW thirty-six A twelve one hundred that talks about giving the bear, the mayor tie-breaking authority in all but basically four situations. One being an ordinance, this is what you usually do, franchises, resolutions for paying money, some of the others. So your vote on appointing um this person to fill uh Lori Bodie's vacancy until there is an election, that the mayor could break the tie. And also the um vote on who should be the um vice chair for council. That's not an ordinance or any of the other things. And so the mayor would also be able to break that tie. I will add, since there are six of you, um, for those, if, if for some reason when you vote, there's less than six, you could be dealing with five, if there were five of you for some reason, then only three would be a majority to um pass either of those votes, motions.
Ms. Pratt, thank you very much for that. And again, this is not specific to this. I, it's more um uh important for future considerations. And it is my fervent hope that I will, in my current role, will be staying out of this unless it's absolutely necessary. Colleagues, questions for Ms. Pratt.
Do you feel that we would want to clarify that in our gov manual at our next iteration of, of review to align it better with the state regulations so we don't have this mistake conflict? Okay.
Colleagues, other questions for Ms. Pratt, comments? Okay, uh, with that, we're going to, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to the next agenda item. It's item D, selection of a city council vice chair. And that is, I will step aside and hand the gavel to the deputy mayor to handle the nominations and the votes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, at this point, sorry.
Please, I was trying to pick up my mic.
All right. At this point, I'd like to uh open the floor for nominations for council vice chair. All right, but um, get some of a riddle, sorry.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Looking at the work we have ahead of us in the next month, having to jump right into middle housing on Monday. I want us to come out of this with a cohesive and as much of an agreement on this council as possible. I want us to have a united front as we move forward to be seen as working well together because we do work well together. And I think the candidate on council that would be the best to take us down that path is council member Goldman. And so I would like to nominate you, council member Goldman, for the vice chair position. Do you accept?
Thank you. Yes, I will accept the nomination.
Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Are there any other nominations for council vice chair? All right, seeing none. Does anybody want to speak in favor? Anybody else have a comment, I guess, about the nomination of council member Goldman? Councilmember Good.
I think that Larry has done a great job of being a council member, and he would be a very good candidate for vice chair.
Agreed.
Thank you very much for your support.
Well, and I want to mention that, yeah, I think council member Goldman did a great job stepping in for me when I had to be away. And I'm going to have to be away again at the end of the month when we talk about our calendar. I think that's, the meeting is June 30.
30th, that's correct.
Yeah, I'll have to be away. So one of the reasons this was brought up is because, you know, there are going to be several meetings in the course of June. And I suspect that some, possibly all of us may have to zoom into a couple of them. And so I wanted to make sure that we had an unbroken chain of leadership as we did this. All right, so I guess at this point then we'll take a vote. All those in favor of council member Goldman for council vice chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all those opposed or abstaining? All right, let the record show that council member Goldman has been chosen unanimously.
Thank you. And colleagues, I thank you. Thank you for taking action on this tonight. You have a lot on your plates, and I sincerely appreciate all of us moving forward. The next big challenge, of course, is selecting a suitable candidate to fill the vacancy. And I know it's going to be a difficult choice. We have outstanding folks in the mix. With that, because it's a special meeting, we can't add anything to the agenda or discuss anything further, so we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.